24th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in the publicly accessible location, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Mendon Select Board is convening by telephone conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We're all set.
Thank you, Laura. So just a couple ground rules. We're going to ask everybody to mute their phones unless you're talking except for the select board. If I were going on an agenda item and I call upon you, we will, I'll ask you to unmute your phone or your computer after you're done talking. I'm just going to ask you to re-mute again. That'll keep all the noise down. And I'm going to step in and cheer for Mark Rail today. Although I see Mark just jumped on right now, but he's probably driving, so.
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome, Mark. All right, so citizen statements and petitions, did we have any, Laura? Anybody?
Yeah, we did. Kathy Schofield wanted to have a yard sale and she's requesting a waiver of the fee. It's for the Historical Commission. And the motion is there for that.
I move to waive the yard sale permit fee for the Mendon Historical Commission.
Okay, second. All right. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Rail, aye.
Eric, aye.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any correspondence, other correspondence to the board?
No. No.
Okay. Say review and consider the STM warrant. Kim, you want to kick us off?
Sure. Pull it up. So everything on the warrant, I'll go through them very quickly. These are all basically consent calendar ones that we do every year for special town meetings. So Article 1 is bills of a prior year. Article 2 is transfer into stabilization. Three is CapEx. Four is OPEB. Five is a matching grant. Article 6 is the revolving fund limit that we left off inadvertently in May. And then we go on to a bunch of planning and CPA articles. And I believe we have persons here to speak to those. Let me just add before we move on, I don't have a number or a certification yet on free cash. So any of these articles, of course, would be contingent upon us having funding available to make those transfers for. I will know in about two weeks. I spoke to Eric about it yesterday.
Okay. All right, so Article 7, to see if the town will amend the Mendon zoning bylaw, Section 1.02 definitions and Section 4.04. Somebody from the planning board here? Sounds like they correct some typos. Is there anybody on from the planning?
It's, this is Dan. I'm actually the one who started this one.
Okay, Dan, why don't you bring us up to speed?
Yeah, hang on, I got like 10 things open. So this, there's two things. The first thing is just a real quick typo that Ann Mazer found. There's two definitions that were in the wrong order, so they're not alphabetical. Just unfortunately, we have to vote on it to fix it. And then the other two things in Section 4.04 are part of the stormwater stuff that Alan has been working on. I guess these are recommended changes to our bylaws to comply with the state rules and updating all this permitting. I just told him I'd help him get it through. They're fairly minor. It's pretty much adding a couple definitions, and I think one of them is literally adding one word.
Because this is coming from Planning Board, is Planning Board discussing?
We're going November. So I think they went to Planning Board months ago to talk about this, like the concept. But the public hearing is November 9th.
November 9th, okay. Okay. All right, any other discussion on Article 7? Lonnie, Mark?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Mark, you good? Assuming. He's muted. I'll assume he's good. All right, Article 8?
Nothing from me, sorry.
That's okay, thanks, Mark. Is a select board against chapter? What's that, 25 Stormwater Management Bylaw? So Kim, what's this about? Is this just tied into what he just said, to Dan just said?
Yeah. That's the one Dan was just talking about. This recommended from when we did the analysis for Alan. These are the changes that are recommended.
Okay, cool. I just didn't tie the two together, thanks.
Yeah, same thing, changes in both bylaws.
Okay. All right, Article 9 is a CPA. Who's here for Article 9?
Hi, it's Ann. This is what we have to do every year with the CPA funds, is divide them into the categories.
Okay, and then Article 10, same thing?
Those, it's historical.
What's that?
Someone from the Historical Commission want to talk about it?
Kathy's here, if she can unmute, otherwise I can.
Repair some storm walls on Bicknell and Old Town Cemeteries. Who wants to talk?
Hi. Hi, how are you? So we are, we would like to get some funds to repair the granite wall in front of the Bicknell Cemetery. I believe this is, actually, no, Article, are we on 11 or 10? Sorry.
Article 10.
I'm doing dueling windows here. So 10 is, yes, repair the stone wall at the Bicknell Cemetery. So we anticipate that it's going to be about $25,000. We've already lost a piece of, stone has fallen down and it's about six feet high. So we went out to inspect it and there's a lot of drainage issues. So we want to get that repaired and corrected so it's not a public safety issue.
Okay, Lonnie and Mark, any comments on that?
The only question I have, totally fine with it. Is there any, there's also a cemetery on North Ave next to 90 where we built that house?
Yeah.
And it was out in the back. Is that one of these?
But yeah, one of the cemeteries in Article 11, we're going to be looking to appropriate fund to do some limb removals of the trees that are dead or dying and pose a threat to the stones that are in those cemeteries as well as drainage.
The fencing leading up, I know that, like, I mean, it was, it had fallen, there was like a gate there almost. Dan, you probably know, I think you guys maintained the mowing up there. And a piece of it fell apart. I just didn't know if part of that was part of this to repair those as well.
Yeah, you know, when we put this together, Lonnie, that, that piece of fence, the gate was fine. It was the gate in the back that was going to be restored by an Eagle Scout, but he never finished. So we can certainly change the sum on Article 11 to include that as well.
Okay, yeah, it would be, it would be great. Again, I just, it was such a nice, it's a nice setup that's there and it's just starting to just dwindle a little bit, that's all.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear, Kathy. So what I'm hearing is Article 10 is to fix some stone walls at Bicknell, at the Bicknell and Old Town Cemeteries, which is plural. Like what Lonnie just asked is, is that part of, is 90 North Ave part of that?
North Ave is under the, under Article 11. That's included in three, you know, because they're different projects.
All right, so let's stay on time for a second, then I'll jump full up because I don't want it to get confused.
Yeah. And at Old Town Cemetery, there's a part, a small section of the wall that's, from erosion has fallen down. I'm sure when you drive by it, you can see it. And we're hoping to get that repaired while we do the Bicknell Cemetery wall.
Okay. And then Article 11 is for repairs just to the cemetery on Harford Ave East, Locust Hill Cemetery and North Ave and George Cemetery on George Street, including the dead trees and everything else like that. So what you're saying is in Article 11, that will fix the issues that Lonnie just brought up?
Correct.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions on that? Article 12 is another CPA account to fund the installation infrastructure for beach drainage and landscape improvements at the Mendon Town Beach. Who wants to talk about that?
I can. This is Dan again. So at the last town meeting, we had requested $10,000 to do engineering studies to figure out, we have some major drainage problems at the beach. This would now be at least the first step to try and do the actual work. Unfortunately, we're still working on getting the engineering done. So this is, at this point, this is somewhat of a placeholder because of the timing of the town meeting. But we would not, if we don't have a concrete plan with plans and everything ready to go, then we'll just pass this over. We just, we're hoping we could try and get something done because if we don't do it now, the next opportunity is May. So I think I had estimated 25,000 right now. This would likely be just to get the big drainage stuff done so we can stop having the beach wash out every time it rains.
Okay. Is there a reason why you wouldn't want to wait till May and put that on the town, on the annual?
It's just, we generally open in the end of June. And so if we don't have funding till the beginning of May, it's going to be really tight to get somebody lined up and get the work done before it's too late and we're open. And then we can't have any work, you know, like, this is going to involve digging some pretty big holes.
Okay.
But I, I'm told the plan was coming to us this week, and I would say if we don't have it in the next week or two, then this won't be able to be done.
I guess I would say the same thing. I'm going to kind of go back a little bit then on Articles 9 and 10. I understand that on 12, I'm sorry, on 10 and 11. Is there a reason, Kathy, why we wouldn't want to hold those until the annual?
I think what we are, you know, what the concern is particularly with the Bicknell wall is that because we've already lost a piece of that stone, I mean, those granite stones are 15 feet long by, and as low as five feet long. The way they're stacked, the condition of the pins that hold them together and the erosion, you can now see through the walls. So the concern is that it can be a public safety issue. If people are walking by that cemetery or walking in the cemetery, that those wall pieces can fall.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Sure. And then, of course, with the tree work, just taking care of them before the trees are looped out is a lot easier.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, obviously, a lot of times when we're looking at the November town meeting, we want to try to keep it to, you know, cleaning up, you know, last year's business and not put a lot of stuff on that can wait until the annual.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, 13 is a land use committee. Let's see, transfer some of money from the land bank to survey and mark the borders for Inman Hill Wildlife Conservation Area. Who wants to talk about those?
I can, Ann Mazer. This is just to, we've never marked the borders on this town property and some of the people's lots are encroaching on the town property. So we just want to mark it so everybody knows where the boundary is.
And again, is there a reason why we don't want to wait until the annual on that?
It's been a problem and it just would be good to have it, the work done and have the problem solved instead of waiting.
Article 4, any comment on that, Lonnie and Mark?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Mark, assume you're going. He might be kicking out again. All right, let's keep on going. Article 14, looks like a general bylaw change. Who wants to talk about those?
Ann Mazer, I can talk about that. It's just to add an alternate member to the land use committee so that, you know, if we can't get a quorum, then that alternate can serve in that place. And then, and then there was also just some cleaning up of the bylaw, like changing board of selectmen to select.
Okay. All right. Any comments, Lonnie and Mark?
I'm good.
Okay. Let's see, we got Historic, Article 15. Who wants to talk about that? Looks like another general bylaw change. Historic, anybody?
There we go.
Good, Dan, you want to talk about it?
I can. So this, this article, sorry, where are we, 13? This is Scenic Roads.
15.
15, yeah. There we go. So this is a proposal to kind of update the Scenic Roads bylaw. It's kind of, what we have now is a little bit vague. There's some holes in it. So this is just to really kind of close some loopholes, also clarify the process. I think there's a lot of confusion as to how it's supposed to work and what it actually does. So this kind of more formalizes the process of going through the bylaw. And then the other change is it adds a new option for what's called a scenic road layout, which would have to go back to a future town meeting for approval, but it would allow to protect like large shade trees and stone walls more than just the road. So it basically gives us another tool as, you know, to preserve some of these areas in town. I don't know if Kathy has more to add to this.
No, I think you covered everything.
So that's 15. And did you also talk about 16, the same thing, same time?
So, yeah, so 16 is the same deal. It's a proposed revision of the demolition delay bylaw. The first part of it, again, is just cleaning it up. It's a little vague, closing some loopholes, clarifying timelines. I know one of the big issues that happens is like someone wants to sell their property but wants to get a demolition delay approval at the same time. And it's kind of vague if the owner, the current owner is supposed to get this review. So this cleans it up to say, basically, our review is good for a year because really we're focused on the house, not who owns it, should be irrelevant to our decision.
Yeah.
And then the big change is we're proposing changing the possible demolition delay from six months to 12 months.
Again, is there a reason like we need to do this at a?
So this bylaw was taken off of last annual because of COVID. And there was a lot going on and we decided to pull it. So we really wanted to get this done.
So, okay, hold on, I have, okay, both these bylaws, both these bylaw changes are being way more restrictive than they are currently are. You're doubling the amount of demolition delay time? So, yeah, we're not, these needs need to be on an annual town meeting with people there. This is, to up the delay from six months to 12 months is crazy. Why are we even thinking of this?
It's worth pointing out that we have not issued a delay in years because quite honestly, when they come to us.
Then why do we need to increase it to a year if we don't issue any delays?
I think the purpose of these delays is to allow us to find, work with the property owner, to find options. It just, it gives us another tool to try and work on it.
You just said we've never done a delay. Why is there a concern that six months isn't enough time?
Because the, and often, sometimes the reason we haven't done a delay is because there's, six months doesn't matter. You need more time to get grants and figure out what's going on.
Specifically, which one?
I, I'll let Kathy speak to specifics, you know, if there's one she has. I would, the one thing I would say though, too, we would be open to amending this, to leave the delay alone and just put forward the general clarifying of the bylaw, which does, it just cleans up the process, who to file with. You know, I think that was the reason, you know, it certainly is open for some discussion.
I, me personally, I'd like to, I think any types of general bylaws that are controversial, that don't, there's no reason why we have to force them through, should not be in our November town meeting. I think that those should be in the annual. That's my opinion.
But I certainly understand the concern. I think putting it off, you know, we don't know what May is going to look like. We could have additional problems. And, you know, in terms of why you go ahead and move forward with a, with an extended delay, we are getting a great influx of demolition requests. We also can identify now what's going to be arriving in our inbox, you know, what properties are coming down based on, you know, how the planning board is working. So, you know, it's, it's very difficult to slow the process once it's started. And particularly in this town, I just think that the, you know, we need to pull the brakes back on how much is coming down and leave some time for discussion.
Six months is ample time for discussion. To force somebody a year to delay because you can, six months is too much, in my opinion.
Yep. Hold on, Cindy, go ahead.
I don't think that this is the time for debate on the substance of the article.
Yes.
It's a legitimate article to put on. It's also legitimate in COVID and restricted town meetings, just like in the annual, to try to make sure articles that are going to generate a lot of interest be put on a warrant where a large section of the population has a chance to act on it. That being said, you know, I think you could do either, but I don't think you should be debating the pros and cons of it at this meeting.
Yeah, thank you, Cindy. You took the words right off. And what, you know, what I'm debating right now is debating if we put it on November or if we wait to the annual. And in my opinion, I think that both these articles should be put on an annual.
Yeah, sorry, and I'm sorry about that, Kathy. I know I shouldn't have done that as well. I know better than that. Sorry about that. I would also agree that these being, I mean, we're even having discussions about it now, but I feel that this needs to be in a bigger form, if we could even get a bigger form in our, in our annual.
I mean, is there any way we can look at, at least, you know, getting the scenic bylaw on this warrant? Because I think we are getting so backlogged, you know, with, you know, attempting to make some progress. And, you know, we don't have a lot, we don't have a lot of structure to work with. We don't have a master plan. You know, we're still waiting and we're just, we're in limbo. And that leaves a lot to open perception. People are interpreting things as they wish. And not only have we been confronted with the looseness and the vagueness of some of the language, but, I mean, I think it's equally as frustrating for those who are trying to, you know, get through the process, you know, not to have that clarification. So, I mean, I think we should at least try to get something. You know, I understand the demolition delay bylaw and, you know, because the, you know, the term is a lot longer, but the scenic road bylaw certainly seems to be, it's more about working together as well with the planning board and the tree warden to, you know, slow down and take a longer look at, you know, what's being proposed and, you know, instead of just letting things go.
Yeah. So Kathy, you know, this is just from my perspective. I really appreciate the effort that you're putting into this and, you know, we, but I still see that, you know, we've gotten to this point, we've gotten to this point, we, six months isn't going to kill us to kick the can down the road. And, you know, we want to be able to have as much participation in this conversation, in my opinion, as possible. And we need to take the safety of all of our residents into consideration for this. I think that we're just going to, we're going to need to wait till May. That's my opinion.
Okay. So when May comes, we're not going to shuffle it down again?
We had, we had 450 some odd people at our last meeting, so.
Okay. Well, I trust that we can, you know, we can get these up and running or working or repaired. And I'm okay with.
Mark, go ahead.
So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how, if this was about wanting more participation, I'm trying to remember back to why we took this off the last time for ATM because, was it because there were too many articles? Do you recall? I may have missed the conversation because I lost service.
I can, I can jump in. We, you know, we were preparing the warrant, I mean, it hit in February and March and we were preparing the warrant. So we asked as many boards to be as patient and considerate as possible because we didn't know how we were even going to have a town meeting at that time or what it would look like. And we wanted to limit, which is terrible to say, but we wanted to limit the turnout as much as possible because we were uncertain that we could guarantee the safety. I don't know that we're in a much better situation for November. I mean, we're back to, certainly now we'd be indoors, so we have to figure that piece out again. But that's just a reminder of how we got here. Nothing to do with the merit of any of the articles as they were submitted, just about the safety in the actual how-to of the meeting.
Right. I just don't think we're going to have a much different turnout in between November and May. And I don't know. I'm not, I'm not opposed to waiting, but I also don't see there as a good enough reason to push it off.
Could we, what, Dan here, could we remove the change from 12 to six months and just put forward the general revisions to the bylaw? Because I think, I think other than that, nothing is more restrictive other than those months. And I don't believe scenic road really adds anything. It just clarifies how it's supposed to be done. If that helps any.
I just wanted to say, yeah, if you take out the six, the 12 months on demolition delay, both of those bylaws just need clarification. And there's been multiple times when it's been hard to figure out what you were supposed to do with this bylaw. So I would say that it, it would be good to have them on this town meeting.
Yeah. I'm kind of going back to a old Rich Schofield, when he was selectman comment, is that when we use, when we discuss STM, I'll grab you in a second, Cindy. When we grab STM articles, you know, when we're talking bylaw changes and stuff like that, I'm of the mindset that any bylaw changes or anything, that should be happening at an annual town meeting. That's just my opinion. And we shouldn't be debating bylaws tonight. You know, it comes down to, you know, these are bylaw changes and the, my opinion, those should be happening in an annual town meeting. That's just my opinion. Lonnie and Mark can all roll me, that's just my opinion. Cindy, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, you can put it on the warrant, you can have discussions and then, you know, it can either get tabled or the motion can narrow it so that you don't have the timeframe being discussed. That's also an option. So just because you have the broader article doesn't mean that that becomes the motion. So just because you have the broader article, doesn't mean that that becomes the motion, if that's at all helpful.
If I still think that that helps the question of these should be on an annual town meeting. This discussion is every single SP, every special town meeting, we have these discussions. What should and shouldn't be on them, in our opinions. Everybody's entitled to their opinion, but. Again, we're, we're, we're making changes. Not just passing some, some financial articles to get us through the next annual. Most communities don't even have special town meetings. Unless it's, it's a, it's a necessity. I mean, well, in this general area, Cindy, I see you cock your head there, you know, like, you know. In these, in a few of these towns around us, they, they have maybe one special town meeting and it's generally only financial stuff. So. Uh, again, I only know in the communities around here that that I work with, so, um, and I know how they, so, uh, uh, again, I, I, that's just how I, my opinion as well.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mark.
Well, um, you know, I think that I get that point, but I always feel like in the past, there's been a lot of discussion around. Well, we really should lump these zoning type um bylaw issues into. A different meeting than than annual town meeting, because it takes up too much time. So now we're here, and I'm not saying this board, I'm just saying in general of the past. It's always like another excuse as to why, well, it shouldn't be this one. We should do it at the ATM or we should do it at the next STM. And to me, a town meeting is a town meeting. I don't care if it's annual or not. It's still the business meeting of the community. The voters still get the same notification that they get when it's annual town meeting. It it just, I don't know. To me, there's no difference, but it is what it is. Whatever, whatever you guys want to do. I will be okay with it.
That's a fair statement, Mark. It's a fair statement. It's just, you know. Annual, in my opinion, is where a lot of this business usually takes, takes uh, takes precedence. And usually in our STMs, it's usually to clean up our financial issues and in business that. Um, is urgent and needs to be taken care of before the next ATM. I, and brings up a really good point about the beach, right? If if he delays, then there's a good chance that he doesn't get it done or. You know, Kathy, with the safety issue on the cemeteries, you know, that stuff to me makes sense, because that's just normal business. But for non-urgent business, I think that those should be happening at the ATM. That's just my opinion. But anyways, Lonnie, why don't you chime in? I want to get off of this, so.
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, we can move on to the Article seventeen, right? I mean, what are we discussing? What's being?
Well, we're gonna figure out what the warrant's gonna be, so we're gonna figure out if we're gonna keep it on or not, but. Well, um, Article seventeen is another bylaw change, a blight bylaw change. What's that?
So I believe we are passing over this, because there needs to be some significant. Internal discussion and outreach before we're prepared to put something forward.
What is a blight bylaw?
So this, really, the, the big issue is to, is um, it's about abandoned and essentially blighted properties. Because one of the problems we deal with with historic is these properties just sit and rot and nobody's living in them, the roof's fallen in. And they, unfortunately, I think in some cases, they get bought and they sit on them and let them deteriorate and then they can't be saved. So I think this is to kind of see if there's something we can do to kind of. Either protect abandoned properties, require just some basic level of, you know, security, board up the doors and windows. Um, I know, but it sounds like there needs to be some discussion with Board of Health Building Department and see if they have concerns that could be addressed or may already be covered.
Okay, but but Lonnie, what it sounds like is they're not, they're gonna pass, they're gonna, they're gonna pull it anyway, so there's no reason to even discuss it.
Yeah, no, no, I just didn't know what it was. I get it. I understand now.
Okay. All right, Article eighteen. There's a select board, so.
That's the development off of George Con Street. Just looks, if it's ready to go, we can just accept the road.
Okay. All right. All righty, uh, so that's the one. Let's go to Laura. Let me just go to, bear with me one second. I'm gonna go to my motions and everything.
Mark, got me all caught off guard tonight.
See, where are my motions? Uh, so. Do we want to discuss whether having fifteen and sixteen on there or what do we want to do with that? Because we're gonna do a motion to accept the uh, warrant tonight.
I mean, I feel like we've discussed it enough. I mean, I I feel that we should put, move them to the annual. Um, I I really, um. I personally would like to understand it, uh, at least sixteen, a little bit more and maybe, uh, if I can, I will come to the next historical meeting. Um, to. To do that.
You can make the motion as amended.
Yeah. We're gonna pull it off. We're just debating.
Yeah, I moved to sign the. Right.
Quick question, sorry. Um, are, are those articles, whose articles were those? Like.
Historic.
That was right, historic.
I couldn't hear you. What was that?
Historic.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, um, so I'll take a motion.
I moved to sign the eleven nineteen twenty STM warrant. As amended. Um. Meaning that with the removal of fifteen, sixteen, seventeen?
Uh, seventeen, seventeen's gonna not be on there anyways. I'm gonna pull it, so.
That's true.
Okay, prior discussion. All in favor?
Teneo, aye.
Real aye.
Okay, okay. All right, so. Moving on, Consider Class Two Licenses, JNG Motors, LLC sixty-five, Providence Street. What's this about?
Chris, um. Jeff Gilbar is the applicant and he is on, um, he has applied for an internet-only class two license. And it has gone through um, all the departments. Uh. Zoning enforcement officer and the building department um have given their blessing to this, um, but it, the, the license has to stipulate that. Um, it's internet sales only, no interpersonal business conducted on the property.
Okay, so no vehicles, no nothing on the property.
Correct.
All right.
Um, sorry, so real, real quick, so I had, okay, is this something new? The internet sales only piece of it? Um, and actually, Jeff, this is Lonnie. I do apologize. I didn't get back to you. Um, I got a little crazy, but. I had talked to the planning board. And I guess it being internet only, it works out perfectly, because originally that, that, that use isn't allowed in where his. Residence, because it's the resident residential business district down off of. Uh, on Providence Road, you know, how, down to Harvard Ave and, and, and down that way, we changed that other business district that. That class two licenses weren't allowed in that district in the, in the use table, but. I guess with internet sales only, it doesn't really matter. So I guess. As lo, as long as it's, it's. They just don't want to approve a license. That's not allowed, that's all, in that, in that district. However, if there's an internet only sales, obviously it works out perfectly. I just don't know that uh, we have it in our use table or whatnot, so. Might need to be amended. I mean, and, and as long as that's all that's happening here, I'm totally cool with, uh, with approving it. I, I, I would, I would like to approve it. However, I just don't, again, I just, we have to be very careful with it, that's all.
So I think what I just heard from Laura is, um. A zone enforcement officer reviewed it.
Correct.
He, they, they feel that it's within uh. Our bylaws, falls within the purview of our bylaws and it's an internet sales only, there's not going to be any vehicles on it. So if it's passed, passed all, it's uh. You know, all the traveling that we need to do and it's kind of approval, I can't see any reason why we wouldn't want to.
Okay, cool.
Assessor's office uh, signed off on it. Um, the only thing I'm missing is um, police chief's approval. Uh, but other than that, everybody else has approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so I'll take a motion.
So move.
All right. All right, any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Teneo, aye.
Real aye.
All right, guy.
Okay.
Um, discuss vacant positions, Kim.
Hi, I just wanted to give a really quick update, because I know we have a lot um, happening with this. We have four positions that are. Sort of out there right now. We've received um. Over two hundred plus applications for these positions. So um, Tonya and I were, have been talking about it and so we're going to um prioritize based upon the need of what position we want to have filled first. And so we're gonna move forward with the admin for fire police, so that we can get them in the door in December on the timeline before the transition for dispatch, as we talked about. Just so you know, um, for the other positions, we're gonna, because it's gonna stay open a little bit longer, we're just gonna extend the deadlines, maybe. Just another couple of weeks. We have plenty of apps. That's not the issue. The issue is just about getting through them all and getting the process done. Um, so that's for the two admins for council on aging, the fire and the finance director. Um, on the regional planner position, um, that's also going, well, we have a draft IMA. That I forwarded to the planning board for comment, um, and I will be forwarding to council, so that we can move forward with that shortly, too. So that's on target for January and that's all.
Okay. Thanks, Kim. So you'll just keep us updated.
Yeah, I just wanted you to know, you know, we're not, we can't possibly get four positions in the door in a month. We have to, because of the, the volume that we've received. We have to prioritize at this point based upon need, and so that's what we're gonna do.
Mark, any comments on that? Lonnie, any comments on that?
None for me.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thanks, Kim. All right, consider meeting minutes for September twenty-second, September twenty-ninth and October sixth. Take a motion.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on the meeting minutes? All in favor?
Teneo, aye.
Real aye.
All right, guy. All right, and then it looks like we have one item, uh, not reasonably anticipated, within forty-eight hours. Award agreement to the town hall well repaired McClure Engineering. Kim, you want to let us know what's going on with that?
Sure, I just wanted to add this, because I didn't want to delay it another couple of weeks. Um, the funding was approved, you remember back in May? We've had three different companies out to look at the well for different types of services related to it. It's within the purchasing limits of ten and fifty thousand dollars for this type for written submission, so we're all good on that. Um, you know, uh, we just want to, we're going forward with McClure, which is the one that's been recommended, um, because of the. Additional level of service detail that's provided within their estimate. Um, we just wanted to make you aware and that this is happening. It's not officially like awarding an RFP, but essentially at this point, because we are gonna move forward with one, we need the board to sign off.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to authorize the town administrators on the servicing agreement with McClure Engineering for the town hall well repair.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion about that? Nope. All in favor?
Teneo, aye.
Real aye.
All right, guy. Okay, and then we got one last thing. It was a, uh, to consider the request of a living. With the Ribbon Foundation to hold a five K run on uh, November fifteenth.
Chris, um, Mackenzie Greenberg made this request, um. I believe, uh, last, the end of the last Thursday, Thursday night or Friday, and I asked Mark if we could add it. Uh, to the agenda tonight, and he said that we could, and Mackenzie is, is here to discuss it with the board.
Okay. Mackenzie, you want to give us an update?
Yes, um, so we're just looking to hold the five K um, on November fifteenth. It's a Sunday morning. Um, the route is pretty simple. It starts at the uh, gravel lot on Millville Road. And it just uh, goes in through Wesley and Kelly and then onto Blackstone and it just doubles back the same way you came. Um, I reached out to the police department today for a detail and they told me that someone would call me back. Um, with more information about that. I haven't heard yet. Um. And then the other thing was the liability insurance. I know someone, there was a question about that. Whether or not we need to have it.
I'm sorry, Mackenzie, go ahead. What was that?
Um, in my communication with Laura, she said something about liability insurance for the day. And because we're non, we're a nonprofit foundation, we don't have liability insurance. We've never had to. Um, we've had the five K three times prior. Um, obviously not in the town of Mendon, but we have had it three times and we've never had an issue with not having liability insurance before. Um, so just. Not sure what we would need to do about that.
Yeah. Does anybody know the rules, Laura? Or Kim, do you know what the rules are on this?
I do not. Cindy, maybe?
Yeah, Cindy, do you know, uh, by chance? If we're required to have liability insurance for a five K for a nonprofit?
Oh, you're on mute.
You're on mute.
I would check with your insurance company to see what specific requirements they have, and you would probably want people to at least sign a waiver of liability if anything happens to them on the public roads.
Yeah, we do have every participant when they register, sign a waiver that just. Uh, leaves us of any liability for injury or anything that could happen while they run the course.
Yeah, but does that, does that protect the town?
We can add that. I draft up the liability waiver, so I can add, like, relieving the town of any liability as well.
You can show me a copy of the language, too.
Okay, I can screenshot that and pass that along.
And then obviously, we're gonna need some sort of detail, certainly if people are running down Millville Road.
Yeah, it's only about point two miles on Millville Road. Uh, but we, I did reach out to the police today.
Okay, I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't feel comfortable if there wasn't a detail.
Okay.
All right, um. I guess, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of struggling here, because I want to, obviously have you do the five K. I just want to make sure all the boxes are checked. I just don't know what boxes need to be checked.
So I, I, I would say I'll make a motion um, to approve the Living with Ribbons Foundation for five K run to be held on Sunday, eleven fifteen. Two thousand twenty at seven thirty AM to noon from Veterans Park. Um, you know, the, the, the um, course to be as, as submitted. And pending. Council's approval of liability slash waiver and um. Working with the police department to get a detail to assist. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to work something out with, um. Maybe somebody would donate their time or we would even be able to just use uh, uh, staff that's, that's available, so we don't incur any costs. For uh, for this, for this uh. Uh, for them.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Teneo, aye.
Real aye.
All right, all right, you can see, good luck with the run.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, and then uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Teneo, aye.
Real aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, tonight.
Bye-bye.
Again, stop the recording.